And with that directive, I would entertain a motion if there's no one else that wants to speak or has a question. Moved by Counselor Dunn, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Comments, questions, amendments? I see none, all in favor? Opposed, if any? And that's carried. Thank you, Danielle. Moving on to the Essex Power Corporation, the appointment of proxy holder for the 2018 annual meeting of the shareholders. And I believe that's you, Ms. Percy.
The municipality, together with towns of Tecumseh, LaSalle, and Amisburg are shareholders of Essex Power Corporation. Essex Power is required to hold an annual meeting of the shareholders and occasionally requires a special meeting of the shareholders. Leamington's two directors appointed to the board are Mayor Hilda McDonald and Mr. Frank Ricci, who vote on behalf of the municipality at board meetings. But this appointment does not authorize them to vote on behalf of the municipality at a shareholders' meeting. The only practical way for the municipality to cast its vote at the shareholders' meeting is by proxy. It's being recommended that council appoint Mayor McDonald as its proxy holder to vote on behalf of the municipality at the 2018 shareholders' general meeting. It's also suggested that Mr. Frank Ricci be appointed as the alternate in the event that the mayor is unable to attend. Since a proxy is not valid for more than a year, this report is brought before council annually. The shareholders' meeting this year is June 26, 2019. The agenda is circulated prior to the meeting, and often matters that are voted on are routine business matters. If the mayor determines there's a matter that she requires direction from council, the issue will be brought before council. There's no financial impact, so the recommendation is that Mayor McDonald be appointed proxy holder for the municipality of Leamington to cast his shareholders' votes at Essex Power Corporation's 2018 shareholders' annual meeting, Frank Ricci be appointed as the alternate proxy holder in the event that the mayor is unable to attend, and the clerk be authorized to sign and forward to Essex Power all necessary proxy forms to implement this resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Percy. Comments, questions? Moved by Counsel Wilkinson, seconded by the deputy mayor. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Because we have as many delegates here tonight, let's just move the next one, the 10.7 ahead of 10.6, if you don't mind, counsel. Is that okay? So we're moving on to the taxi cab bylaw, the follow-up to the questions. And I believe that's you as well, Ms. Percy.
Thank you. The municipality provides a legislative authority for municipalities to regulate taxi cabs, establish fares or fares to be charged, and limit the number of taxis. The reason the municipality chooses to regulate taxi cabs are listed on page two of the report. Prior to 2016 and this taxi bylaw, there were frequent complaints by council members, the BIA, the public, about taxis, specifically parking in municipal lots and on the road in the uptown, and also the condition of the vehicles. In preparing the new bylaw, administration scheduled individual meetings with each taxi cab owner, sought feedback from the drivers, the OPP officers that patrol the uptown, business owners, and the municipality's insurance broker. The draft bylaw was also sent to each taxi cab owner and drivers, and they were invited to attend one of the two public education and feedback sessions. A letter was also sent to the greenhouses explaining the new provisions for the taxi cabs. At the March 26 council meeting, administration was asked to provide responses to questions that had been raised by taxi cab owners, in particular Leamington Taxi. So I'll go through the questions that were submitted in the response. The first question was paving of parking lot, space parking lot for 12 licenses. The taxi bylaw includes a provision that the business premises must be located within the boundaries of the municipality, open and accessible to the public, and in compliance with the zoning bylaw. The owner is required to establish and maintain parking spaces, the size of which must be in accordance with the zoning bylaw, the location of which shall be in accordance with the site plan approved by the municipality, and the number of which shall be sufficient to accommodate every taxi cab owned by the taxi cab owner. In addition, all such parking spaces must be located either all at the business premises and/or at one other location, which is not the business premises. No such parking spaces shall be located on municipal lands or highways. The intent of these provisions was to ensure that each taxi cab business owner had adequate parking for its vehicles and were not parking on municipal lots or in the uptown, taking up spaces meant for customers of uptown merchants. The municipality zoning bylaw not only regulates where businesses must be located, but Section 4.39 also requires that parking areas must be hard-surfaced. Hard surfacing is not a defined term within the zoning bylaw, but is commonly interpreted to mean asphalt, concrete, pavers, or other similar material. Administration is required to apply the zoning provisions pertaining to hard surfacing as stated in the zoning bylaw. However, applicants are permitted to seek an exemption from council. It is the intention of the planning department to bring forward a report to council seeking further direction regarding the requirement for hard surfacing. That report is expected within the next two months. A taxi cab owner does have the option of attending before council to seek an exemption from this requirement for hard surfacing. The next question was eight years new, so we're speaking with respect to the age limits and the conditions of vehicles. Taxi cabs are known to deteriorate more quickly than other vehicles. Regulating the length of time a vehicle can operate as a cab ensures high-quality vehicles. Age limits regulate how old a vehicle can be when it's first licensed as a cab and how long it can operate before it's required to be withdrawn from service. Setting an age limit is consistent with other municipality standards and ensures that better quality vehicles that are new or cleaner and safer. It's important to remember that often a visitor's first impression of the community is the taxi that they take. In an attempt to address criticism raised about the vehicle condition and ensure safety of the public, the bylaw limits the age of a taxi cab to be no longer than eight years. All cabs currently licensed are within this required eight-year model age. In 2016, before this bylaw, the Ministry of Transportation and the Essex County OPP inspected 11 taxi cabs in a surprise safety blitz inspection. Of the 11 cabs inspected, three had minor problems that were fixed on-site, while another six were removed from the road due to serious safety infractions. A second blitz was held in October 2018 after this bylaw was in place. 12 vehicles were inspected with no major violations found. Therefore, administration recommends maintaining the eight-year age limit. Should council wish to remove the vehicle age limit from the bylaw, administration would recommend replacing this provision with the requirement to provide an original safety standard certificate twice a year versus once a year. This will ensure that older vehicles, despite the age of the vehicle, are still safe for transportation of vehicles. Administration would also request that the Ministry of Transportation continue safety blitzes to inspect the vehicles and also the authenticity of the documents that are being provided. The next question was owner versus broker. The taxi bylaw does not provide for leasing of plates or owner's licenses, as the plates are and remain at all times the municipality's property. Administration does not support the concept of owner-operated plates or owner-owned plates and will caution council moving in this direction. Currently, all taxi plates are owned by the municipality; they can't be transferred, and they must be returned to the municipality when a taxi is no longer in use. An owner-owned plate system creates an industry with absentee owners, complex leasing, increasing plate values, and a small group of individuals who are profiting immensely through ownership of licenses. Plates can increase in value and be sold as high as $500,000 in some cities. This results in a barrier for entry for new participants to the industry. As seen with the local media and with the Quebec government, once a municipality establishes owner-owned plates, it can't be easily reversed at all. To allow an owner to lease a cab would require lease agreements between the owner and their driver or the leasing. It would be prudent to ensure that any lease agreements contain the required provisions and are properly executed. Administration has concerns with regard to the amount of work that would be involved in overseeing these lease agreements and wouldn't support the leasing of cabs. Ghost taxis? A ghost taxi is an unlicensed cab transporting passengers to and from a location. Since the initial meeting with the owners and drivers in 2016, administration has continued to work with the OPP in laying charges on those unlicensed vehicles and drivers. We have also encouraged store owners, such as Walmart and FreshCo, to establish taxi stands. Creating a taxi stand on a commercial property is the discretion of the business owner, but the stands would make it more difficult for the ghost taxis to operate in these locations. Administration is aware of the issue of ghost cabs and has been working to find resolution for several years. The current bylaw does include set fines for any person found to be operating a ghost taxi. Bylaw enforcement continues to work with the OPP in this regard. It's important to note that this is not an issue that's specific to Leamington. Currently, the taxi cab bylaw requires any person wishing to be licensed as a cab owner to own a minimum of five taxi cabs. This provision was historically included in the bylaw to protect from fly-by-night operators. This provision may actually be contributing to the proliferation of ghost taxis by excluding operators who do not have a fleet of vehicles and deterring new businesses wishing to operate taxis. Council may wish to consider removing this requirement from the bylaw. Cannot park at municipal parking lots? Again, prior to the implementation of this 2016 bylaw, cabs were parking in municipal lots, and it was a huge problem. A business is required to have sufficient parking to conduct its business and should not rely upon the use of a municipal parking lot, which are meant for customers in the uptown. Meters or set our price? So we're talking about the municipality regulating fares? The municipal act gives the municipality authority to regulate the taxi industry, including establishing rates or fares. The current bylaw organizes the municipality into two zones with regard to the fare to be charged. In previous extensive consultation with the owners, only one cab owner had indicated his desire to move to meters, while the other owners were satisfied with flat rates. Administration had forwarded a letter to all the owners asking them to provide a joint request if this was now their desire. No proposal was received. The municipal act indicates that a municipality may establish the rates or fares to be charged for the conveyance of passengers. Council may consider not regulating the fares, allowing the businesses to set their own fares. By allowing the market to dictate the prices, owners would regulate themselves, taking into account their own costs and profit margin while remaining competitive. By requiring that owners make the fees visible to consumers, a consumer will know the cost of service before proceeding and able to make a decision if they're willing to pay the price. The next question, not allowing to pick up in Wheatley or Chatham Kent? Taxi cabs must be licensed in the municipality in which they're operating. For example, a taxi cab only licensed in Leamington is prohibited from picking up passengers in Kingsville or Chatham Kent. This is not a new rule that is exclusive to Leamington, but it is found within the municipal act. High-fine tickets for drivers? The Provincial Offenses Act is a procedural code that governs the enforcement and prosecution of offenses created by bylaws. All set fines are established by an order of the Regional Chief Judge of the Ontario Court of Justice. Municipalities are responsible for suggesting the set fines amounts with relation to the bylaw when they make their submission to the Ministry of Attorney General. In 2016, set fine amounts were prepared and forwarded to the Ministry of the Attorney General's office for review and approval. The fines are consistent with what other municipalities are charging, but also are set at a rate that is sufficient to deter those who wish to contravene the bylaw. Calling the MTO every time to threaten us? Inspection of taxi cabs by enforcement section of the Ministry of Transportation is an activity carried on by the ministry. However, administration does request this enforcement activity and insists in its implementation. We're not aware of any threats in this regard. Not allowed to pick up at meters? The municipality cannot interfere with the right of a private property owner to establish who has access to their property. Yellow took our name. This would be a civil nature, as the municipality does not authorize nor approve the names of a private business. The bylaw only regulates the paint and requires that owners paint and keep painted a taxi cab with colors that are distinctive and different from those colors used by another company. No one at Town Hall listens to us. Complaints are received at Town Hall where a customer service representative logs complaints through City Works. Bylaw enforcement follows up on all complaints logged. Not allowed to advertise on vehicles? If the municipality were to allow for advertising on taxis, it would be recommended that the advertising is regulated. Such regulations would require determining what percentage of the taxi cab can be covered with advertising, setting standards and guidelines as to what is acceptable advertising, reviewing and approving all advertising prior to its placement on or in the taxi cab to ensure compliance with above, and enforcement of any contraventions. Currently, there is insufficient staff resources to manage this. Not allowed to sell vouchers? For greater clarity, a taxi cab driver may not accept any form of currency other than cash, debit, credit card, but not limited to coupons or other documents purporting to take the place of currency. A cab may be used to transport workers at the fare set out in the bylaw. The service may be prepaid or may be paid for following receipt of an invoice, but the bylaw does not currently permit coupons or vouchers. Bylaw 6316 does not apply to vehicles that are operating under a written contract for specialized services, including but not limited to transportation of schoolchildren or workers. Should council wish to remove the fare regulation from the taxi cab bylaw, companies would be free to accept any payment they wish in exchange for service. So in conclusion, there has been some consideration by municipalities in deregulating or reducing the regulations that are being placed on taxi cab owners. The suggestion is that deregulation allows for a more playing field for taxi cabs, who are now competing against private transportation companies such as Uber and Lyft. Administration is not aware of Uber or Lyft currently operating in Leamington. However, council may wish to consider removing or amending the regulations regarding the age of taxi cabs, the regulations relating to fares, and the regulations relating to the number of vehicles required by a taxi cab owner. There's no financial impact associated with this report. However, any changes to the bylaw may result in a financial impact with regard to administering the bylaw and enforcing it. So if I could just review the recommendations before council. The first recommendation is that Section 44 of the taxi bylaw, requiring a taxi cab to be not more than eight years old be maintained or that it be deleted. If it's deleted, that the bylaw include a new provision that two annual safety checks are required. The next recommendation is that Section 30D of the bylaw, requiring an owner to own five cabs be maintained or that it be deleted. And the third recommendation is that administration be directed to hold a public meeting to seek feedback on taxi cabs using meters, a tariff of fees, and the concept of the municipality not regulating fares.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Percy. Counsel, I'm going to say that we will wait and listen to the delegations, or did you have a question ahead of time? Okay. I just want to say that regards to the paving, we're not going to discuss the details of that, because this will apply to people other than taxi cabs. It will apply to other businesses, and we're going to have a report within the next two months from planning. So discussing and debating, more or less debating, that's not the forum here, because it would not be seen as transparent if we only have that conversation. Okay? And then to the delegates. A couple of rules, and I'm going to stick by them. You will see how crabby I can be if you decide to go against. Five minutes. I'm going to set my timer. I will not tolerate any yelling from the seats. Anybody who speaks out of turn will see the wrath of me. I want you to come up, say your name, and state your issue. If the next person comes and it's exactly the same issue, I'll probably cut you down or cut you off, I should say, because we still have a bit of time to go through this evening, so I don't want to hear the same thing over and over at length. You can say you agree, but I just don't want to have 10, 15 minutes spent on the same issue. So first on my list of delegates is Mr. Lundell. So we'll need a name and an address, if you don't mind. And he is representing Leamington Yellow Taxi.
Good evening, your worship, council members. I will be brief. My name is Norm Lundell. I'm sole practitioner with a business address at 1575 Dougal Avenue, Suite 1A in Windsor. And I am here to represent Leamington Yellow Taxi and just to provide some brief feedback on the recommendations in question within tonight's agenda. So briefly, just going down the list, the recommendation, my client is recommending 1B, that the eight-year minimum be deleted. He supports the idea that taxi cabs can be maintained with two yearly inspections, but would prefer to have some notice with regards to the inspections so that there's a minimum impact on the operation of the business. With regards to the second recommendation, 2B is recommended, removing the requirement of five minimum cabs. My client does not believe will reduce ghost cabs and expecting them to comply with the bylaw regulations if they were amended and allowed to apply just to use those vehicles and convert from a ghost cab to a licensed cab without any incentive other than just that offer. My client doesn't believe that that is realistic. The proliferation, he believes, of the ghost cabs is from the ever-increasing demand of transportation needs between the farms and downtown areas. With regards to the third, a public meeting is encouraged and welcomed after the planning department would submit their report to discuss that issue as well as other issues, including the regulation of fares. The belief that is, if there's a deregulation of fares in whatever form council approves, is that it's going to increase revenue for cab owners. It'll encourage rate stabilization, and the competition will be healthy for the market. The current system of the fees that are set, it's antiquated, it's outdated, it does need to be looked at again and reevaluated, that's for sure. And because of the constraints that that old system has placed on cab owners, it also creates a financial barrier to meet the new requirements of the taxi cab bylaw regulations as well as any property standards, regulations, et cetera, that are affecting the cab owners. Without getting into any debate, your worship, about the hard surfacing, I would just make this comment, and I would ask council to look at any changes to the hard surfacing requirement on a case-by-case basis, where you have to look at whether that site is a public site, is the public going to be accessing it, or is it a private site? Is that something that will only be for the employees and the business owner? So I think that will play a major role in determining whether the hard surfacing can be changed. My client supports selling plates as a broker. There are some economic advantages to the owner, which need to be looked at closely. I understand Ms. Percy's points with regards to the points that she previously made, but from a business owner's perspective, I think that needs to be taken into account. Currently, most drivers in town, they make 40% commission in general. I can't speak for every cab owner, but that's my understanding. And that needs to be looked at closely as well, because what I'm hearing is after, and I call it cabbing, if a cab driver is working 60 to 70 hours per week, making 40% commission, sometimes that translates to $5 an hour. So there is a problem, I think, that could be addressed with working with the town and perhaps business owners. Is my five minutes up?
4:44.
I believe that's all I have. Those were the main points that my client wanted to get across. Everything else will be addressed.
Perfect. You have five minutes. Thank you very much. Are there questions for Mr. Lundell? From anyone up here? It's up to you. You can ask now, or you can ask them at the end. Okay, all right. We'll have questions later. If they have questions for you, we'll call you back up. Okay, thanks. I appreciate that, Norm. Appreciate the time. Next, I have Joanne Graves from Sunparlor. Same rules apply, Joanne.
Thank you, your worship.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good evening, your worship. Good evening, council. On behalf of Sunparlor Taxi Cab. Okay, so my minutes are starting now, I assume.
Okay, right now.
All right. So we just have a few things that we would just like to voice and to go ahead and bring to the floor. Speak up.
Yeah, just get it a little closer. Move the whole thing closer. Perfect. Thank you.
Is that better? Okay. Does that mean I get to start my time over? No, I'm just kidding.
We're at 25 seconds.
Okay, so starting with 1B, we propose going nine years with one safety certificate or leave it as is. We agree that in the vehicle should be maintained and well kept up and reasonable. We believe that is practical. But we're proposing that maybe it should go for nine years with one safety certificate or leave it as is, just because of the cost efficiency. You're basically doing the same thing if you're having two certificates in one year as to opposed of leaving it one year more to one and just having one certificate would suffice, or leaving it as is. Regarding 2B, owning five cabs, we are strongly in favor of leaving it to having a cap of five, five taxi cabs. It opens the door for other companies to easily come in, for the go system to come in. It'll be harder for the town to regulate, harder for our officers. It'll just create more work all over the whole board. It's inviting unwanted and chaos into our town that we really don't need. And it will be profitable or feasible for anyone. Regarding number three, we firmly are in favor using meters. That fare should be regulated with non-meters, left with a flat rate. And this is how we feel for these reasons. We're here for the community. We're here for the people. We recognize and acknowledge that many of our customers, our consumers, they're seniors. We have a multicultural town, and getting over even the language barrier sometimes takes a little bit more time. So we're suggesting, and we were in favor, just to leaving it as is. Again, we're just looking out for the best interest of our community and our town. Page three, number one, won't need to pay for personal spots. Okay, so that is just being on the platform, right? We're going to discuss that at a later time when council is ready to bring that up. We're okay with that. So page five, owners versus broker. We disagree. We feel that this will create a lot of safety issues. Again, it will be more difficult to govern and oversee the safety of the vehicles. Example, if a broker has a vehicle that needs repair and he doesn't have the money to repair it, that vehicle then leaves people at risk, and it's a high safety risk. It will open up more claims. It will open up more claims legally, environmentally, and it'll just create more issues right across the board. Selling plates as a broker, we feel owners should own their own plates and can only be sold to existing companies under the consent of council, of course. We agree that there should be no lease. As for ghost taxis, we have no issue, and no one understands that everyone is doing their best, and we thank everyone for that. Again, Again, having a minimum of five cabs would avoid this. Page eight, not allowed to sell vouchers. We are strongly against this. We would just like to take the time to help you understand our position. We service a lot of seniors, as I said before, in the community. Many of them are under a financial cap. And it would benefit a lot of them greatly if we had like, let's say, gift cards or gift certificates, these kinds of things. So this way, family and friends can offer to buy them a cab, to give them something like that as a gift, it would help them financially. And also, just being considerate to one another as we often do. I know many of us, we like to give gift cards to one another, Christmases and birthdays, and we do anything we can to help. So I think it would be a great benefit if we could offer gift cards and gift certificates and something like that.
We're over five minutes.
Thank you, worship.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, council.
A question from Councilor Hammond.
Thank you, worship. Joanne, I just wanted to jump in here for a moment. When we had talked about, we had talked about meters, I thought your impression was yes, you would like meters, and then you went on to say leave it as is. Are you in favor of meters or no?
No.
No, okay.
Sorry. Do I need, would I need to clarify that?
I maybe misunderstood you.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, sorry.
Pardon? Yeah.
I'm sorry. Should, do you need more clarification, Madam?
Good now, you straightened it up, that's good. Yeah, thank you very much, Joanne.
Thank you.
Mark, do I have Mark down now? Colleen from Leamington Taxi.
Good morning.
Good evening. Well, I suppose when you're driving taxi, it's hard to tell what time of day.
Yeah, all hours.
Yes.
Should I press here?
It's on, Mark.
It's on.
I'm going to start you, my five minutes. Give me a second here. Mark.
Good evening, worship. Good evening, counselor. Let us start with the parking lot. We've been in the business almost 12 years. We have no issue with the previous, say, administration. They let us sit by Canadian Tire with 12 parking lots and I talk with them. But now, we have, like, I'm talking about myself, I have a paving parking lot which is hold 12 license, and then I have gravel parking lot which hold another 12, which is a total of almost 24 parking lot, but I still am not proven for that. I've been asking couple businesses to rent space from them, like Portiquaise Club and 489 Oak East, which is oak variety. They get a lot of spaces for parking, but also the town, they reject that because of the site plan and the Portiquaise Club, they don't want to do the site plan. So I'm really frustrated how I'm going to find a place with a parking lot and with all this 24, they asked me for 24 or 26 parking lot, thus include the dispatch disability and 12 license, 12 employees. So I'll go with the age of the taxi, like, most of the city or town in Ontario, they have 10 years, thus include Windsor. Windsor, they have 10 years old, they give break for the taxi company to make profit. Like, for example, if I'm going to go with eight years, each vehicle, like, I have to buy 2014 or 2015, so I'm going to stay five years until I get another eight years old. The vehicle, if I go to the dealer for 2014 or 2015, that's going to cost 20,000. Each vehicle, 20,000. So if I have 10 license, not 12 license, that's almost 200,000. If I have this money, 200,000, I might invest it in the greenhouse or somewhere else, I'm not going to invest it just for three years and then I'm going to scrub it. Already, like, I bought last year, 2010, and each vehicle cost me 8,000. I have 12 license, that's almost 92,000 last year I spent, so this year I have to scrub them and just spend 200,000. So where is my profit? I don't think we're talking about broker, owner and as broker, I think the broker or owner operator, that's very good solution for the town of Leamington since Windsor, they are doing it, Chatham, they are doing it, London, they are doing it, Hamilton, they are doing it, Toronto, they are doing it, everywhere else do it except Leamington, they are not doing it. Even Kingsville, they are doing owner operator. So I can go to Kingsville, hire someone, has his own vehicle, his own insurance. Last year, almost, I couldn't get proof for the insurance, so I'm going to lose all my company because I have one policy. Every driver, he make claim, then it goes on me and my insurance is going to go up, up, up until I lose it. But if I have individual as owner operator, then I'm going to lose one driver instead I'm losing whole company. And I can prove it to you if you want the insurance, which is hard for me, but I paid extra to get my insurance. That's all because the driver, they don't care, it's not their vehicle. I get a lot complaint from daytime driver and nighttime driver. Daytime, they said, why? Nighttime, he didn't clean the vehicle, why I should clean it? And this, but if the broker, everyone, he's responsible over his vehicle, there's no one else driving his vehicle. What else? The ghost taxi, it causes us, the ghost taxi, a lot of problem here and everyone knows about them. I've been in the business 12 years. 10 years ago, I called the town and complained about ghost taxi, they said, we are working on it. I called almost a month ago to the town about the ghost taxi, they said, we are working on it. So I don't know when they're going to get fixed for the ghost taxi. There's almost 100 ghost taxi, I guess, you don't know about them, but I'm driving 12 hours, I know, even I have all the plates for the ghost taxi. I need the authority to do some action for ghost taxi because that's, the ghost taxi is not good for the town. If they got an accident, all over the news, they have personal insurance and they get help from government as disability or welfare. The high fine of the driver, we get high fine of driver, like, $500 for because of the headlight burning, and the driver is going to get that ticket. I think that's way more expensive than the police itself. In the police, if you catch someone with the headlight, they give him warning and next time might give him $60 valenties ticket, but not $500. There's a lot of valenties on the bylaw.
Getting close to five minutes, Mark.
Yeah, I know, but I'm trying to. I guess the meter is good. I get a lot complaint and everyone knows Fredy's, Fredy's Restaurant, he's complained about me, he said, I have the distance from the Marina to Fredy's, it costs almost $11. But from Fredy's to Armando's, $7.50, he said, the same kilometers, the same time, why I'm getting charged more than. So we get a lot complaint about why not we have the meter. If we have the meter, the meter will charge for the distance and the time.
Okay, I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark, appreciate it. You covered quite a few.
Okay.
Oh, do you have a question? Counselor Dunn.
Your matter, Mayor. So when it comes to the meters, it's no meters, you want no meters.
No, we need meters.
You want meters or you don't want meters?
No, we need the meters because the meters is, sorry, the meter has display, so the customer can see the display, there is, so when I saw the customer now, oh, it's going to be $10. They said, how I, it could be $8, how I know it is? But everywhere else, like Windsor, they have meter, Chatham, they have meter, London, they have meter, Hamilton, all over there, so why Leamington, they don't want to have meter? I'm just, my question.
No, but we just want to make sure that you're in favor of the meters.
Meters, or at least raise the rate, instead of $7.50, make it $9, because minimum wage is going up, the fuel is going up, everything going up, even the license is going up.
Thank you.
Mark, have you priced meters?
Yeah, the meters, it goes like, start the meter with $3.80, which is thus Windsor.
To buy? No, how much does it, will it cost you?
It's almost $300.
$300. Can you move them? Sorry, can you move them from one? No, it's me.
Okay.
Can you move them from one taxi to another taxi?
Yeah, yeah, you can, but with the technology, you don't need meter. Meter is with the iPhone, like, Windsor now taxi, they have the app with the meter, so they hit the app and the meter will start with the kilometers and it's all through the satellite.
And the people can see it?
Oh, yeah, they can see it.
Okay.
Through the tablet or the iPhone, just mount it and the people, they will see it.
Okay.
And Windsor, they are doing, all you have to do, deal with the companies, they do, they give you the software.
Well, when I take the cab in Toronto, though, they still have the meters.
Yeah, there is all the style, meters, you can connect it to the transmission sensor and we'll do with the time and with the.
Okay, but you can't do it with your phone.
For example, as I told you, like, from Freshco to Fury Tower, which is, take two minutes, why I should charge $7.50? Should be $5 in the meter.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mark, appreciate it. We might have more questions, so appreciate it. We've got Dave Dick next, then. Welcome, Dave.
Madam Mayor and Counsel. I am a customer of Leamington Taxi and we find his service to be very important. Part of the contract, I employ offshore workers, part of the contract is to provide transportation for the worker to buy his groceries and whatnot. One of the options is for that, to do that myself, but that gets very old. And I think I could speak with, speak for many farmers that we need, we need these taxi companies. It's a very important part of our, part of our business, I believe, to have safe transportation. One of the, a big thing that I have a concern with is the ghost taxis. Really, really quite concerned about workers getting into those ghost taxis as opposed to getting into a legal taxi. So if there is any comment I would make is that please find a way to root out the ghost taxis. It might make matters simpler for everyone. As Mark previously mentioned, there are 100 of these roaming around town, and if they were eliminated, that may help boost the bottom line and make matters simpler for everyone. Thanks.
I'll ask you a question about the ghost taxis. You're going to know this better than I will. Do the employees not know they're getting in, your employees, would they know if they're getting into a ghost taxi or not? Because all of our companies have the signage on the taxi. So are they getting into them because of cost? Are they getting into them because they don't know better? What would you think is the reason? Because, yes, there's onus on us, but there's onus on them as well. Is it education? Do we need to educate them? What, why is that doing that? How can we make it better besides just catching all these guys?
Well, I think one point of education would be through the OGVG, if there could be a contact made there and that news can get spread quite quickly.
They have that app now? They have an app for the growers, for the workers?
No, no, I'm saying that through the OGVG.
Right.
If the message from the town could somehow get relayed to the OGVG, that might be a starting, a starting point as far as education. To your other point, I had three new workers last year from Mexico, first time in Canada. They don't know what they're doing. They're just getting in a car, cost them five bucks, so.
See, so cost is a driver.
I'm sure cost is, you know, cost and, yeah.
OGVG has an app for the employees, for the migrant workers, and we could, we could translate that message to them to put on the app.
Oh.
So they can use it on their phone. It's for information and teaching and.
Hub Connect.
Hub Connect is what it's called. So, yeah, that's possible, that part we can do. Okay, that's it for me. Do you have a question? Anybody have a question? Mr. Dick? No? Okay, thank you. Okay, counsel, shall we start with, do you want to start with one issue at a time as laid out in the report? How do you, I think that might be the best. Okay, so let's start, where's, give me a second here.
I don't have it as page, I don't have it as page four, I have it as the entire.
Second, second, let's see, here's.
Thank you, that's what I need to know, is page four. Thank you.
Yeah.
No, it's just the two pages aren't. Okay, I'm looking up here.
Okay, so what page did you say, Larry?
Forty.
Okay. Is it owner versus broker? Is that the first one? There's one, or is that it?
Something to be said for paper. Next time, I'm coming with paper. Okay, eight years new, age limits and condition of vehicles. Will we start with you, Counselor Jacobs? I'm going to write down who lets me know they want to speak and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The eight-year limit on vehicles, I guess if they're going to do two safeties a year would be acceptable. However, I think it would tie in as well later on when we get down to the brokers. I think that will tie into this. So, I don't know how you worked that out. Did you want to mention that now or do you want to wait till you go down to the next
Let's do one point at a time.
Just one, one?
It'll take me forever going from one page to another. Let's just kidding, on one page. Okay, so you are for the eight years or you're against the eight years?
I have no problem with the eight years as long, it goes along with a vehicle inspection to ensure that.
A yearly one?
Pardon me?
It is currently a yearly one. Yearly inspection with eight years. Okay, thank you. Counselor Wilkinson.
I have a few things. First of all, before, I'm disappointed, I don't want to debate the hard surface, but when we go back to the first one there where it was, we talked, it was paving a parking lot slash space parking lot for 12 licenses, I'd like to talk about that point. We've skipped over that one.
Sure, we did.
You're talking about the spaces as opposed to the paving?
Right. I don't want to debate the hard surface or anything like that, but Mark, he brought up that he has to have 24 spaces for 12 licenses. I think that's worthwhile discussion point as well.
Hold on a second. Is that something we can debate?
Well, that's within.
Is the zoning bylaw?
That's right, that's why I'm looking confused. That's within the zoning bylaw, so that's a requirement of the zoning bylaw.
Maybe it's me.
I guess then I'd ask, what's the justification for that? If you have 12, I guess I'm just looking for an explanation, whether it be from our planning department or whoever could explain at that point, the reason behind that being set up that way. That seems, what's the word, excessive to me. That could be challenging, too, to find a building with a parking lot that would support that. It could be also a financial burden to try and find that as well. So I'd be looking for the justification for the reason for that, for the zoning being that way, then. Would be my question to staff.
The justification is within the zoning bylaw indicating that you have spacing, spaces for each vehicle and each driver. I'd have to look back into the, any notes or any comments that were made in 2009 when the zoning bylaw was passed. If there was any discussion about it, I can't say. But if council is seeking an amendment to the zoning bylaw, it can certainly be implemented through the appropriate process, if that's council's wish.
Okay. Because I'm going to assume if you have 12 licenses, the reason why 24 is you're assuming that 12 people drive to work, they need 12 parking spots for their personal vehicle and then they jump into the cab. And I don't know if that's the case because I've never gone by and seen at any cab station where there's, I think, I think there's room for improvement.
Can I interrupt you, though?
Yes.
So this is the zoning bylaw, we would have to. So this is the zoning bylaw, we would have to apply to have that or ask to have that changed. So again, we would need a report, I would assume, rather than debating it at this point in time.
Sure, I'm good with that.
Then maybe we can give direction because we're already going to have the issue of hard surfacing brought back to us. So I think, yeah, because there is no explanation, that's how it was done? Okay, if you don't mind, okay.
Bring that back, thank you.
All right.
Okay, on to eight years. I guess my question I had was, I'd like to know what it costs. We're looking eight years with two annual inspections. What's the cost each time for that annual inspection, that cost of safety? Could somebody enlighten me?
We contacted two garages today and they advised us that it was $100.
All right, I thought it would be more than that. I don't know if people in our audience agree with that or not. You don't?
Sorry, we're not going to engage, if you don't mind.
My first notes that I put in here was, I thought eight was a little, and what do I know? I don't know anything about cab companies, to tell you the truth, or cars, how long they're going to last. I do not know. But I do take my, my, the word from the experts in this. I do put some merit behind that. And they say eight years is a little light and I've heard that from a couple of them here tonight. Eight I think is debatable, whether it's eight to 10, I don't know. I just want to make sure they're in a safe vehicle. And if, I don't know how comprehensive that one safety check that happens, I'm assuming that it's very comprehensive and does the trick, then I would say that only one is needed. That's my concern, is that the person is getting into a qualified, safe vehicle. Whether or not you're going to get that from two, I don't see the, I don't see the need for that. I only see it one time, put less of a cost burden onto these businesses and less hassle, I guess. So whether it's eight years, I'd be willing to move that up to, I heard some parlor say nine would be more acceptable, 10. My main concern is that we do put them through the annual inspection one time as long as that annual inspection is considered legit and respectful and worthy. That's my thoughts.
Deputy Mayor, I have you next.
Deputy Mayor, I think it should be 10 years similar to the town and one inspection a year.
Counselor Teason. I'm just going around the table, then we'll start.
I would agree too to go to the 10 years. I would have no problem going to two inspections a year after the eighth year, just to make sure that these are safe. And as long as they're looking like they're, they're in good shape, there's no rust, they're, they're kept in a, in a clean state and that they are inspected or safety checked by a reputable company. Whether we can give a list of 10 places that do safety checks, that we know that are reputable, we don't want these safety checks being done in backyard, by backyard mechanics. That would be part of my concern.
Thank you. I believe the clerk would like to speak to that.
I just want to clarify something before Counsel continues talking about the age limits. So when we talk about the safeties that are required annually, like you indicated that reputable people, those individuals are granted that authority by the ministry. So if that's part of the ministry's inspections, that's why they check that documentation to make sure nobody is providing fake safeties and there's repercussions under the ministry's legislation for those types of things. When we talk about inspections, when they have an annual license renewal, so when they add a car or the license is renewed, our bylaw enforcement officers do a general inspection of the vehicle. Obviously they're not mechanics, so they're looking for things like rust and any obvious mechanical concerns. As far as the, when we speak about inspections, the ministry comes and does their own inspections here. We are one of the only municipalities that they still come to, which says something. We have no control over when they do their surprise inspection, so to say that we would reduce it to one inspection, we really have no control over that. When we talk about what we have control over as far as inspections, it would be the walking around the car, which we only do annually now.
Counselor Teason.
Sorry, just to follow up to that, yeah, the, yeah, as far as the MTO inspections goes, yeah, that is something that they would, they would do. The inspection I'm talking about is just the safety check and just make sure that the companies that they're using don't have infractions on their records and that sort of thing. Because there are some, even though they have the sticker that says they can do safety checks, may not be entirely reputable. That's my concern with that.
Counselor Hammond.
Thank you, Mayor. And to Counselor Teason's point, when the MTO did those surprise inspections before, they, they found a lot of taxis that were on the roads that shouldn't have been on the road and/or had, had violations. I agree with eight years, moving that to 10 years and giving the companies a bit of a break. And I also agree with two inspections for the last two years. One inspection as we've done up until now because they know they're going to get those surprise inspections. I know Mr. Lundell thought that, that they should be given notice, but I think that takes away the intent of the whole, the whole inspection by providing notice. So I, I'm in agreement with that as well. 10 years for the life of a vehicle, in the last two years, two inspections, one a year for the first eight years.
Counselor Dunn.
You, Deputy Mayor, I mean, sorry, Madam Mayor.
I have moved on.
Deputy Mayor's over there, I know who, I'm sorry. Discobuberated a little bit, squirrel. After hearing that the taxi cabs say about 10 years and nine years, I am in agreement with the 10 years, two inspections after the eight years. I am totally agree with that. And I think we have a majority from the taxi cabs as well, owners, so I, I think that gives them a little bit of flexibility, a little bit less cost on them.
Thank you, Counselor. So moving on to the next. Oh, okay, we can do the motion on that right away then? Question from the deputy mayor.
If, if we're going to have a, an open house or a meet and greet, can we not, I think we may be putting the cart before the horse here. We may come up with different solutions later, but I just think doing a motion now is premature.
Counselor Wilkinson.
I think Deputy Mayor has a good point. I'd almost like to, you know, gather all our thoughts here. What's, I think we just came up with pretty much a concise opinion there, 10 years, one per year and two. I think it would be wise to put that down and as a presentation at that open house as well. It might save us from having to come back here again because who knows, maybe is there still one more cab company out there, maybe that hasn't had input, but will attend that, that public open house? Maybe they're going to think differently.
Well, my, my thoughts to that are, we have done our due diligence. We have invited the cab companies tonight and if they, and they came and they spoke and we listened. I'd like to see us start to clear this up because I do believe the other, the paving of the, of the whatever, the parking lot and the spaces, that would be a whole other, that will be another report. I, I'd really like to get this cleaned up tonight. We're, we're working our way through this. I, I would, I would prefer to, to get it done. They'll know at least where they're heading. And the other we can clean up when those reports come from planning. If that's okay? Okay, so then on, on the first, the eight years new, the age limits and condition of vehicles, I would entertain a motion made by Counselor Hammond. And what would that be?
The motion being that we extend the life of the cabs to 10 years, one inspection per year for the first eight years, two inspections for, for the last two years of the life of the cab.
Seconded by Counselor Dunn. Are there any more comments or questions? And one, one safety inspection being required? Okay, now wait a minute.
Just to clarify, so what you're saying is that eight years be removed, 10 years be inserted. The first eight years, staff would do an inspection twice a year. And then, pardon? Oh, sorry, once a year. And eight to 10 years, staff would do an inspection twice a year, but maintaining the requirement for their safety certificate to be provided on their renewals annually once a year still? Okay.
And if that's, the second year was Counselor Dunn? Are we clear? Counselor Dunn? No, sorry. Teason?
Yeah, it's okay.
We need name tags.
So is it the safety check in the, in year nine and 10? So safety check, one safety check a year up until year eight and then two safety checks in the last two years? Not the staff inspections, but the safety check?
So you're asking for a safety certificate?
Yes.
Twice a year between eight and 10 years?
Correct.
And the staff walkabout essentially is maintained at the once a year when they do their renewals?
Correct.
Okay.
Is that not what you intended when you put that in there, suggesting that if we went longer than eight years that we have two inspections a year? Or were you talking just two visual inspections by staff?
I was suggesting that we require that they get the garages to provide them safety certificates.
Yes, okay, that's what I thought as well. Okay, so if we're clear now, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Number two is owner versus broker, selling plates as a broker. I'm going to start down here with Counselor Dunn.
Your matter, Mayor. I know that the cab owners are all in favor of the five cab and they want to reduce the ghost cabs. My concern is that, and I know with brokerage and, and I'm not an expert as you, as Counselor Wilkinson said as well, you are all the experts, but my, my thought is regarding the, if we had, if you could only own one taxi, do you run your own business, similar to what Mark was saying, you might get some of those ghost cabs to stop being ghost cabs. They may not be able to afford five taxis to, to be in business. And in Toronto, you, some of them just run one taxi, that's their business. So then my thought is to maybe open it up so that, give them that opportunity for those ghost cabs or people that want to be in business running a taxi have a chat, a chat operating. But I understand where you're coming from, thinking about five, but that's where my thoughts are right now. I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say.